Okay. Folks, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with this liberty and justice for all. Okay, good evening, folks. Here and there. This is the December tenth meeting of the town of Canada Eagle Planning Board. It's our final meeting of the year, so don't get excited yet. Wait till the meeting's over.
Oh.
Let's see, Wendy and Scott, I think you know everybody up here. Any reason for me to introduce the diocese? Okay, skip that formality. To point out to you two that your exits either way, should we have to leave the room? Please make note of where they're located. Uh, we do have some people online. Uh, first order of business is the privilege of the floor. Uh, anyone here, there? Uh, when I address the board regarding an issue, an item that's not on the agenda? Now's the time to do so. If not, we'll assume you're here for agenda items. Uh, we have no legal notices to be published tonight because we have no public hearings. So that was not a requirement that we had to, uh, confirm. And, uh, it's moving on the agenda. So we get the meetings over with, right? So we really go, wow. Okay, first one is, uh, twenty twenty-four, one twenty-two. Scott De Hollander, uh, forty-four, sixty-eight County Route sixteen. Scott's back with an amended site plan. Please address the board and give us your name and address for the purpose of the record.
Sure, yep, I'm Scott De Hollander. The Hollander Design, my address is seventy-three, forty-six Dryer Road. We were here previously to present, uh, on lot three. Uh, we obtained a final approval for that site plan, uh, but the architecture for the proposed house wasn't perfect at that time. And there were some changes, um, specifically the garage was rotated. Um, and the house was slightly rotated as well, um, to further complement the grading and to accomplish um, some of the owner's preferences there on, um, matching the architecture to, to the site. So, uh, we resubmitted our site plan and it was determined that we should come back and see the board about, uh, the changes that we were proposing. And, uh, for those that were in the PRC meeting, um, it was requested at that time that we put together a comparison plan of what was previously approved. And, uh, others on the, uh, on the screen there. And, uh, what we're proposing now. So what we've, um, highlighted here for you in red and also slightly ghosted is, uh, that previous um, uh, approval. So all the site plan information that was previously approved, the driveway configuration, the front um, walk, the septic and the footprint are shown there in red. You may have to stare at it for a second to see the specifics. Uh, but I think it's helpful in illustrating, um, you know, e- exactly what we're what we're changing here. It really is very subtle. The centroid of the house stays exactly where it was. There's that slight rotation that I was talking about. And, um, maybe a, a minor, um, reconfiguration of the driveway also to better align there with, um, with the rotated, um, uh, garage configuration. But all in all, very similar to what was previously approved. Uh, on the utility side, uh, virtually no change, um, to comply with, uh, s- some setbacks. We did have to move the leach lines about two feet. Uh, you can see that uh, that's shown there. And then we also slightly adjusted the, uh, the septic tank about five feet. Uh, all other utilities to the site, the water, um, and gas still come from County Route sixteen as they were originally configured. So happy to answer any questions. Talk further about any of the details that we have here.
How are you making out Tyler on the, uh, septic system?
We're, we're approved.
Oh, you're approved?
We got a thumbs up.
Okay, all we saw was a email from Tyler saying that it had not been approved, but that was back in well, it was beginning of the month, okay. But you're okay now?
I, I believe so. He asked for a record drawing on, uh, lots one and, and four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, uh, you know, it's traditionally, we, uh, work real closely with Tyler on these things and haven't had any trouble in the past. I'm like, I believe they've traditionally made conditions of, uh, CFO.
Okay. Email is December third, but says this office has not approved the on-site wastewater system. Comments and revisions were submitted to the engineer on nine-twenty, so I guess it's a previous submission, but a recent email, so, but you're saying it's approved.
Chuck, I don't have any, I don't have that email, so I can't speak to it specifically, but, um, this will be the first call I make tomorrow. I'd be surprised if there's outstanding issues.
Okay, well, it's not a big issue because I think we can certainly condition yeah, the approval based on the, uh, issuance of the septic. Which I think is part of Scott, did you re-average your height of that building based on the new
We are under the thirty-five foot.
You're on.
The back of the house will be exposed, the, the foundation, but the front, um, you know, is will look like a one-story.
It says they have a walkout to blow your decks.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're right there. So on the backside, uh, the walkout provides that extra story.
And that access easement for the, uh, common drive, that, I think that was tied down through your last report.
Yeah, yeah, we've, um, studied that. Well, it's, it's in place.
He's smiling.
Yeah, it's an important issue and, um, it's come up a couple of times.
Uh, yeah, yeah, we want the neighbors to cooperate and agree who's going to take care of what.
Indeed.
Just under control. You, you're gonna keep those trees down along, uh, County Route sixteen, which I think you did with the other lots?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we've maximized as much as we possibly can, uh, the retention there. There has to be some clearing, uh, you know, to accomplish what we show there for the septic install, but um, as much as possible, we are preserving the tree line. I believe, um, you know, we're showing the clearing limit there and you can see the previous clearing limit in red as well. They're very close.
I think we talked about the San Diego Shad board, the shoreline guy, shoreline, I think we felt with the trees, it was not an issue, so.
Quite a ways away from the lake.
In fact, the trees on the other side would pretty well take care of it. Uh, no effect on the steep slope, we've finished the house. Um, Kim, uh, you revisited this at your last meeting.
We had no new comments.
Yeah, I remember that she just, uh, native species, if you, if whatever landscaping you put in, please use, uh, native species. I, that was certainly DCB. If MRB, they reviewed the original, right? And you had, that was back in, uh, June, I think so. That was your going letter, review letter on that. Uh, Fletcher had no comments, additional comments. Any highway had no comments. Our company had no issues, Cheshire. Anything else, Ford?
No.
Okay, uh, secret was taken care of last time around, so all we have is an amended site plan resolution. Um, it's a couple of conditions, uh, someone want to give me a motion?
I'll make that motion for an amended site plan. What this is, right? At, uh, at four-four-six-eight County Route sixteen on CPN twenty-four-one-twenty-two. Do we have one additional issue? Is he a approval of this septic? Is that on there?
I think that's on the floor.
I was looking for it.
Yep. Design, revise.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. To within the standards that's called there.
I'll second. Uh, the motion of second. CEO resolution. Maybe took it out. Oh, uh, I don't think we had any comments from, uh, Mike Murphy on this. Number eight, you have his conditions to be addressed.
Oftentimes we'll put that in there just in case he has.
Okay, well.
It's in the race. And, you know, here it just shows that it's under review, so in the event that he does review it, if you're guys, uh, built some suspenders, so.
It's a house we got resolved. I think, right?
Hello?
The height of the, uh, home.
Yep. It was stated under thirty-five.
Yep.
On the average.
Okay. A motion of second, I think we're ready. Move, all favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, thanks, Scott.
Yeah, thank you very much. Have a nice holiday.
You too.
Thanks.
Okay. Next, we have a twenty-twenty-four, one-twenty-one. Daniel Clement, Dave Lefier. Uh, our property at thirty-seven-sixty County Route sixteen. Site plan to tear down and rebuild a single-family home in the RLD district. Uh, with a new footprint renovated, just until this landscape is somewhere around. And Wendy, good to see you again.
Nice to see you as well.
For the record, do you want to finish your?
That's Wendy Mahar with Mahar Engineering, twenty-twenty-four West Henryetta Road in Rochester. Um, I'm here representing the client. Uh, it's pretty straightforward site plan. Uh, it's a tear-down rebuild for complying with all the code requirements. Um, the owner wanted to have a level area for the kids to play in, in, at the rear of the house, so we have leveled and balanced the cut and fill towards the rear of the site. With that graded, um, the reason we picked the backyard is because the front yard downhill of the site is where we proposed the stormwater management practice. Uh, but with the, uh, grading in the back, it threw us into thirty thousand, little over thirty thousand square foot disturbance. So we are complying with the Article Five drainage improvements. We actually went a little further and, um, developed the bioretention to be able to hold back the hundred-year storm with the more frequent intense storms that we've seen in the past. Um, we did review both the one-year, ten, twenty-five, fifty, and a hundred, and even the two-hundred-year storm. And, uh, the two-hundred-year storm will start spilling into the catch basin, which is the outlet structure of the bioretention practice, but the, uh, um, it's basically a lawn area with a little bit of a sump to it that helps capture that stormwater.
I guess there's a plan and, uh, just show us the flow of water I get between the downspouts and and I do, and we obviously see the it's a innovative, uh, planning came up with.
So there's a little less than two acres of offsite drainage that kind of comes towards the site as well, which comes from the north. And it'll kind of come in this direction, get intercepted by the driveway uh, slopes such that it'll push any driveway drainage towards this riprap swale. Um, any downsides and volley impervious from the primary area of the house as well as any interceptor, uh, curtain drain here, all run and yellow spouts tied into a, uh, kind of a for bay or pretreatment on both sites, so we call it this one. And then they spill over into the infiltration practice. And then what happens is we have a a catch basin here that has a it allows for the underdrains to be tied directly into that, that catch basin once the water filtrates through and cleanses. And then it also has a small, um, restricting pipe at the top of the catch basin, so any surface runoff will be controlled, tying into that catch basin. And then there's a twelve-inch storm pipe that releases to the existing, uh, roadside catch basin. And then as well, anything from the driveway filters down this roadside sway or badly swale captured in this catch basin, that too is tied into this catch basin. And then over. So with this practice, and it's small, but it's part of the drainage report, the blue area is everything that, that runs into the bioretention directly. This yellow area goes to the roadside swale in that small area near the driveway apron. Just because of the the way it's graded and it's, it's a little bit steep, that just goes directly into the roadside, uh, storm.
Have you been working with the county regarding tying into that?
Yes.
Inlet, okay.
We have.
So you'll need that approval, and I guess
Yep.
You had also said that to widen your driveway and to extend that uh, driveway cover in the gutter there that we made approval from them on that too, I guess, right?
Yep.
And the driveway is existing, but you're widening it, okay?
Yeah, it's, um, it's a little bit close to the property line, but we wanted to leave the area for the bioretention practice and, um, it just just makes sense to leave it where it is.
Yes, my question is application. Who proved this subdivision for this lot? This is the craziest lot.
Crazy shape.
I mean, was it seven, seven plus acres, right?
It's about six point three acres, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
What's the rest of the lot being used for?
It's just wooded. It's heavily wooded, so, uh,
From that wood line?
This is the area in the back, so we're not clearing any of those in the back. We're simply just regrading this the slope here, and it actually ties into the this here. There's a little kind of guesthouse or something in. Um, so we did receive we did receive comments from uh, Mr. Cooper, uh, the end of last week. We did address all of those comments. We revised the plans, submitted them. And we did a comment response letter, point by point. Um, submitted that to cloud permit as well. And, um, I'm happy to entertain any questions or specifics you want to talk about here regarding your comments.
No, we're still working through the response letter.
Okay.
But like I said to you earlier, I don't think any of the comments that you had, in particular, maybe, so you always had a response back.
You know, some little things like that, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I have a comment. Um, is there a long-term maintenance plan to keep this, uh, the bioretention area fresh and then keep it from fines getting into sand filter or things like that?
Yep, so, um, there is details in, uh, H C four. But we also, and it's really kind of hard to see on this, but this is the underdrain that comes across and eventually ties into this catch basin. We've provided a cleanout. And then there's cleanouts, I believe, coming from where the structures turn. It's so hard to see on there. Um, but we have provided cleanouts to allow them to snake the pipes if needed. They're also six inch diameter, so they're substantial. Two.
Three questions, kind of. One, landscaping plan in, for shoreline guidelines. Two, um, you're showing a nine-foot driveway, but our show, our plans show it should be a twelve-foot driveway. I'm thinking maybe that's pre-existing. And you already started construction? Did you get that approval already?
Um, according to the contractor, they got approval to demo the house. And they're staking out for foundations. They haven't started anything yet, but they do have permitting to get started on some of that stuff, is my understanding.
It looks like it passed that, my opinion. Um, so landscaping for shoreline guideline?
We did. We, we submitted a, uh, landscaping plan from Ted Collins.
Okay.
Uh, there was, I think, two existing trees in the front, that's substantial.
Right.
And we're replacing three new trees. We did go to the Environmental Conservation Board last week. They were happy with the tree selection and they were happy that we weren't disturbing into the woods.
And nothing happening across the street?
There's not, nope. Um, so the existing shoreline has some mature trees. We're not making any improvements on the, uh, lake shore side of the lot. And they also, uh, or we also submitted drone photos
Yep.
from the lake looking back, so you get a vantage point for the lake shore guidelines and just see the screening.
Yeah, got to on those in my history, but, um, driveway width?
We really want to keep it existing, um, the nine-foot wide, there's just, there's not a lot of room on the lot.
Can that be that pre-existing non-compliance in? Does that work? That's what I was thinking when I saw it. I figured it was
I figured it's more a question for Mike Murphy as a matter of building code. So I know, but with the driveways mostly for fire access.
Right.
Um,
Would it need a waiver or something from us or something?
From us? I'm not sure where is that the requirement in zoning or is that the site design?
It's like designed.
If that's in site design, the planning board can
So the setback is maybe two feet from the sidewalk. Typically, they can
Oh, right.
The restriction is a hundred and fifty feet for fighting a fire. Um, access within a hundred and fifty feet. So we are within that that, that's setback for that distance. So I believe they would just
Yeah, get the
run off the road to fight the fire.
You get the additional three feet, you're pushing closer to the property line, which you make that not, that would be right, sure, because of the rules. It, it is already nine to twenty, but we make it more like and, or pushing it toward the center of the property, which is getting into a lot of that grading. Could affect that.
Yeah.
I guess my question really is, can we maybe take it as existing non-compliance? Like avoiding? Not, yeah. Are you changing the surface at all?
No, I think towards the back, it maybe gets filled a half a foot to a foot.
Yeah.
But for the most part, the, the slope remains pretty consistent with what's existing.
But you're not keeping the, the standard asphalt, it's not an alley.
No, it'll be repaved.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll take, they'll mill it down and, and repave it because they're, they're widening the back there. That's the approach to the currently, the approach to the garage or, or parking area is in the front of the house. Ours is in the rear.
I mean, the only issue I can that I'd be concerned about would be the fire issue, and if we leave that up to to Murph to make that call.
The site design criteria says the requirements contained herein may be waived or modified by the planning board if it is found that strict application of the requirement is not needed to meet the purposes of this manual or that such modification or waiver requirements would provide an upgrade of a what would otherwise be required. By which, up in Solentown Highway and Water Superintendent, others as a
Well, you have Murph's in uh, review in here that is concerned, comments be addressed. I don't know. He didn't have any specific comments that he could down. I guess I'll check that when he issued the building permit, if it's something that's not compliant with fire code. You know, from a practical standpoint, other than the possible inconvenience of the somebody coming up the driveway and somebody trying to get down the driveway, that's, you know, that's it's an inconvenience. It's not, I don't think there's any fire and safety issue there.
It's, it's, yeah, it's the driveway's four or five car lengths.
And the existing driveway's nine feet now, right? Is that what it is?
Yes.
We've always gone with twelve feet, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
Um, I think if, if, uh, Murph, we put a condition that says have Murph check it and sign up on it or whatever. And then, for any specific to the
Specific to the driveway.
Well, since the planning board has to weigh that, say, the planning board waives the requirement for driveway width subject to uh, we're approval by Town Global, is that what's it?
Hmm. On a pre-existing condition. I mean, I
Is that okay with the rest of the board?
As long as it's a standard pre-existing condition. But I don't want to be a standard that we give away a new driveway, you know, new stuff for new driveways or new lots.
You can add that as a binding for the waiver, I guess.
Yeah. Does he not, our review during the PRC?
He, he, it was it was referred to him, uh, and he wasn't PRC at whether, you know, a lot of times at PRC, we don't get into the the details.
Okay.
Plan review, and he
Okay.
Reviews it, he's on leisure. I don't believe he had any specific comments on this application.
And I think that
Didn't say anything.
I thought that driveway width as far as it being noted, only came out of our comment letter because we didn't see it there. But that was a recent addition that we'll have submitted today anyways. So I don't think it was on the plans previously if it was looking at it.
Do we get into an issue with the breach in non-comformity if we have all the expansion? Well, it, it's a it's a relief or waiver, it's a waiver more than, I guess. It's, it's not a zoning, it's not something, you're, you're saying it would have to go back to zoning board or, or had to go to zoning board, we'd have to no, I don't think it's a zoning issue. I mean, it's, it's a site design. And it's in the site design manual, so it's, it's something that that we, we adjudicate. So is that condition, uh, okay with the board?
Okay.
Read it back. Any other, uh, items, uh? The, uh, the renderings and the, uh, building plans were appreciated. Um, do you know what color facade this building's going to be? I, I know in New York, it's like, it's on here.
Uh, per the rendering, I believe it's kind of a cream, creamy white color.
Okay. You know, we don't have a whole lot of buildings, so people what color their homes are, but in relation to the shoreline guidelines, we tend to try to sway people toward a more earth tone.
Understood.
Uh, it's the homeowner online, he's not I mean
They were going to be, but it doesn't look like they are.
Would you carry that message?
I will.
Okay.
If they wanted
It's just that rendering looks awfully white. I mean, uh, we're trying to somehow soften the look, and I think we've been successful with a number of new homes as far as, uh, giving them to do a more natural earth tone.
Okay.
Pure white.
Uh, was there a question of the chimney height?
That was, I know the height was twenty-eight point whatever, so I get, assume that's the maximum height of it, which is less than the, uh, the maximum.
Um.
The rendering, I saw it was max height twenty-five feet.
Oh, was it twenty-five?
That's, I think I just looked at the render and got the set.
Yes.
You had it in your data sheet as far as the height.
Right there.
On your site plan. Yeah, on the right-hand side.
I, I had him add that, um, if you can zoom in. Oh, can you zoom into that? The chimney, if you would, please.
And he sticks above the roof.
And the
Yes.
Or the aerator at the top, yeah.
Can you read those dimensions?
Um, at the roof line, it says max level eight twenty-five. And then the chimney or fourteen
It was kind of four.
That's right, I've been informed that the chimney doesn't
Well, I think there is a limit, but I, I, you know, that it's below that.
We'll save, I mean, I don't know, I, I don't, I can't get it up on the board there, but We'll save, I mean, I don't know, I, I don't, I can't get it up on the board there, but. Max is twenty five feet, or is it twenty five feet from grade level?
From average grade.
Thank you.
Yep.
From average.
Grade and.
So on the documents there, if you see.
Many things that were on them.
Below is, is the average grade. And then if you look at our site plans, we have the calculations and the calculated.
Our.
Distances.
That was a, those are very busy plans.
It was a lot, I know.
Yeah.
Chuck, there's one more, one more point related to the driveway, Tim found that in subdivisions. There is a process for waivers or something like that, or to request a waiver, I'm just thinking of it from a process standpoint. Uh, do we have them request the waiver from the planning board?
We can answer, you know, actual waiver document. No problem. Uh, we have a standard waiver document.
Okay.
Just to sort of be. After the fact, I guess you'll be filling the request out after we grant the waiver, but at least we have it on the.
Yeah.
And your reason.
Not just.
In the verbiage, you're in the application and request the reason for your waiver. We can all agree it's non-compliant.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Uh, the county sewer, you're just going to re-permit, reconnect?
Yeah, so the.
The lateral?
Yeah, so the two taps for the the sewer lateral as well as the water are actually kind of close. And then we're rerouting them further apart and around the bio retention area. Um, and we'll obviously have them televised to make sure they're okay, but water comes along this direction.
Mm-hmm. So there'll be new levels?
They will be new laterals, but not new taps.
Okay.
They will, they will tie into the existing taps.
So you'll need a, I think they call it a re-permit from.
Yes.
Uh, it's signing color, Chipo had no concerns, I know it popped up on the seeker. Uh, but you got a, you got a response from them. Talked about the lot configuration. You, you have a small, a three foot retain wall there, Wendy, and, uh. I know a lot of times MRB likes to see the design of that, is that something?
It's only above a certain height. Okay, I'm sure it's true.
It's usually four, right, Eric? It's more of like a, a small landscaped wall, more than. Retain wall, they just wanted to have this patio.
So the drywall, mortared wall?
Well, it does two purposes, it helps just direct water coming down the driveway that would come on the patio. But obviously they want the patio level, so there's just like a three foot disparity and it actually tapers down one foot. On this end, so it's just a small.
Feet.
Yeah. Usually anything over four feet gets engineered, I believe, right, Eric?
I'll leave it up to MRB if they want to design.
And I believe.
The plans are secret, something that we want to see.
Yeah. Well, that'll be covered under your catchall with the town engineer. This did not go to the county planning board, I think. I think Mike's CLD had it going to the planning, just county planning board, but. Did not go because it was a safe plan. Single lot.
Yeah, there are, um. I'm playing with words. Yeah, you said it's a single site plan where residents actually thought they'd need to see it. There's been conversations on whether or not they want to see them when they're in the ILD, but it's not a for sure.
Okay.
I don't see any comments in here, I wasn't here for that PRC meeting, so I don't. I don't know, but.
Uh, it, it was not in the PRC minutes to be sent to them, so that's why. Let me get it soon, that's fine, I'm.
I mean, it's not a county requirement that we send it for.
Okay.
These there have been informal conversations on whether we need to send them on that.
Okay.
Going forward, I'll need to get some more formal information on.
Sure. Okay, um. The existing house, well, it was down now, I guess, it wasn't historic in any way, was it? Okay. We usually ask on tear downs.
Yeah, it was built in the eighties.
And we also ask if anything salvageable, possibly donated to restore, but, uh. That might be. Horse is out of the barn, horse out of the house. All right. Anybody in the audience have any comments on this application? Yeah, I think we're ready to move forward, Mark. Uh, we have a type two seeker. And along with a single stage site plan, we can do them together if someone is on client.
I'll move to front of the single stage site. Wait. Secret play two for thirty seven sixty, counter sixteen, CGM twenty four, one twenty one. And there, we now have fourteen.
Yes.
Fourteen conditions and additional. And, uh. Alright, so the changes to the conditions, I do want to change here since seven, uh, Jim had a comment. That this is city water, so, um. I want to change it to read prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy approval from the city of Canada DPW. History provided, regarding your view of the water design. Could be provided to the town. Um, edition thirteen added, you have to shell submit a formal waiver request for driveway width. Mission fourteen, uh, driveway with departments waived by the planning board, subject to review and approval by the town, the town board, obviously. And then.
Be covered in the findings.
Right, the findings would be added, uh, no additional finding number thirteen. Waiver driveway width was found to be an upgrade over the strict application of the. Site design criteria. Due to the pre-existing nature of the driveway, and request for review by the town, code for stop sure to ensure compliance with the phone code.
Okay, on the waiver was required, is being requested, okay. Anything else, um? Anything else, Wendy, I know, uh. Dennis, uh, the Atlanta, the art landscape architect submitted the, uh, landscape plan, he didn't show any shrubs or bushes.
Yeah, the client is trying to keep costs to a minimum at this time, so they are not proposing any shrubbery in front of the house, but they, uh. It is noted they will be native in nature if they do add anything, but. Yeah, they just wanted to keep it simple and keep the cost down.
Okay. Well, from the lake, uh. You know, the deciduous tree you have there, when they have leaves, certainly will create a lot of the buffer of the house, uh. Winter, of course, the leaves will be gone, but, uh.
So I think the drone photos that we did send you was late fall, um, I don't know that there was much. For leaves on the trees, I would have to have you pull that up, it might give you a little bit.
Yeah, the trees, the tree bulk itself, the axes and buffer, even without the leaves, you're right, there's a lot of, uh.
Do you want the video or the photos? Um, either, uh, would work. So, yeah, so here there's our site there. And here, this is a, make sure trees in front, it's really like our property is here, so that is.
Yeah, that's the guest dance.
Yeah, the neighbors' guests.
Well, how's the board feel about it, that they feel any additional landscaping? Should be provided up near the patio, that was Miami, so. Forgot to bring it up.
The renderings, um, and some, the renderings that were submitted will give you the front elevation of the house if you want to, um. Pull those up and you folks can.
Yeah.
Is that what you wanted?
Uh, sure. Oh, yeah, you know.
It's great.
Yeah, it's just that patio in the front seems so. And if you stick a. Oh, lawn chairs and picnic tables.
Two trees out there.
So that there's a tree.
See, I, I will say that there. I keep going back to, as far as the view from the lake, it's not as. Stark as, uh, as it was just that. It's up to.
It sits back.
Looking at the neighbors' guest house anyway.
Yeah. That's the rear.
That's their backside.
Yeah, it's the backside of the house.
It will, huh?
So you can see that, that small landscaped wall, which it, it was rendered as like a reinforced concrete wall, but it, it'll be more of a stacked stone wall.
Just. Well, I'm sure there, at some point, they'll put some landscaping, all my finances, finances allow, uh.
There's a tree that's not.
If you could pass that along to the, uh.
Yep.
The applicant, uh, along with the, uh. Trying to tone down the color facade, that would be appreciated.
Okay.
Wendy, I have one more comment, I mean, I was out there today, surprised to see the house gone, but there's no silt fence.
Okay.
There's a lot of excavation out there without.
Okay.
Any use of any silt fence at all.
I will let the contractor know.
I don't know, it was permitted to you earlier, but. I mean, it's.
They, they have been permitted for the demo.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I was shocked to see that much and no fencing. Okay, we have motion second.
Don't take any second.
Oh, second.
Good.
Uh, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We want to keep, uh, okay, we have motion second, uh, for discussion. I asked people in the audience, I'll be fine, okay, we can do it, all the favor. Aye, aye. Close. Let's have it. Okay, thank you, Wendy, good seeing you. Have a good holiday.
You too.
All right, we have next a extension request. Well, excuse me, we have two. Two reviews of two code amendments. Uh, that are. Have been developed by the, uh. ordinance committee and laid in front of the town board, and the town board, I assume, established steerings. And they, they've sent it out to all the reviewing, their. Committees and boards and ask for any comments we may have on it, and. I will yield to Sarah to go over the two revisions.
Sure. So first one is, um. Adding a new chapter of town code, chapter seventy seven, it's going to be titled alarms, and I'll just read the summary. So it relates to the maintenance of fire alarm systems located in the town, we've had an increase in false alarms causing unnecessary strain on emergency responders. And I'll add also our own code enforcement office, um, they have to respond like when there's a fire alarm. So if it goes off repeatedly, we have to go every time. Um, and I guess recently, they've had some issues where the alarm system weren't, weren't being repaired. Um, they were just like, uh. Shutting them off or unlocking them, and so this law will provide, um, some method and rules, so our enforcement office can. Um, enforce those and just get people better in compliance, get just, you know, get their alarm systems fixed, since we go, we don't have so many false alarms, we could be spending our resources better. Um, so again, this is a new, a new chapter. Um, the public hearing is going to be set, or it's, or it was set, um, I think for our upcoming town board meeting, so. Um, this is a law that was proposed by our enforcement office, so I don't have any additional details, but, um. The draft laws on the town website, so, and, um, materials. In the public agenda, I'm sorry, I can't give you a whole lot more on it, because I'm not as familiar with this law, but. ordinance committee was supportive, so.
Yeah, I think, I think it's motivated with false alarms. Trying to get some sort of control or some sort of. Penalty for excessive numbers. I didn't notice, but is there an inspection, who's doing these inspections, or is there anything like that, or is this an after the fact? Yeah, I didn't know that either. Seemed like it would be fire department or somebody doing the inspectors. Verifying that they're good or bad.
And we do have a fire marshal who works for the town, it's on the men. I'm assuming if there's something, like probably to be involved. Our enforcement office or something like, I don't know, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know details of this all. Just, I mean, very basic, no gist.
Well, does anybody have any objections?
I don't do this, no.
Not. Let the ministry collectively, no objections. And I apologize, Evan, I apologize, I should have taken care of your extension request, I was going there and then I got diverted.
That's okay.
Back there real quick and so you can get, get on with your evening, um. Board, I'm going back to item number three, which is CPN twenty twenty four oh ninety six. Uh, request for a second ninety day extension. Where the medical office building is proposed out at five and twenty there near the Holiday Inn Express. And the, this is your second request, and Evan, if you'd be so good as to tell us, uh, how you're making out and, and what seems to be holding you off.
So we had some back and forth, um, and we were coordinating on the stormwater easements, um, we had that in place, um. You know, our material was submitted to the cloud permit back in October, uh, we received additional comments from MRB in November. Uh, we have gone through all those comments, um, and responded and uploaded, uh, revised plans, so we really should be, um, at the end here.
Okay, was there a wetlands or DEC issue, I think that, that was, uh, the reason, part of the reason for the first extension, right?
Yeah, we have the federal wetlands, um, we cannot get any communication back from DEC. Um, we've continuously reached out. To the contact, um, our consultant has, and we are just not getting. Anything back from. So the original, when the hotel was built, um. The, the, the wetlands, the DEC regulated ones are the, you know, the, the inlet. Which has a hundred foot buffer from the, the inlet itself.
Right.
So we, you know, an army corps, uh, and our consultant, our, our consultant, uh, confirmed with. That previous delineation. Um, and didn't feel the need to. Change it for any reason from the last delineation.
How, how does the new floodplain designation, I, I know it hasn't been adopted yet, but it's been, I guess, defined. Uh, does that affect you in any way?
Uh, no, when we looked at it, uh, I believe it stays, because we're kind of, they, they had filled that area during the development and the approval of the hotel.
Damage was done then, okay, um, so there's nothing, other than the items you talked about previously in terms of the plans themselves. There's nothing that the DEC of the wetland issue will hinder you from, uh. Moving forward, uh, once everything else is done.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, let's hope so. Uh, good. Uh, board, do you have any questions regarding this application or the reasoning for considering an immediate extension? Second ninety day?
Nope.
Okay, so we're looking at the resolution prepared. This would extend it to March tenth next year. So think you can do it by then, Evan?
I don't think we have a choice. Yes.
That was my next comment. Uh, yeah, we're, we're very, very, very reluctant to grant a third extension, so please. Get it done if you can. We wish you well on that. So I will make a motion that we grant a second ninety day extension to uh. Uh, let's see, caustic engineering. Representing John Antamosa. At forty four ten, category five and twenty, the CC zoning district. Uh, for a period to extend to March tenth, twenty twenty five.
I will second the motion.
For discussion, if not, all favor.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Evan. Sorry I hold you up.
No, no, no worries. Thank you and have a great holiday.
Okay.
Take care.
All right, let's double back to or move forward. The other uh. Request that they asked review on chapter eighty eight.
Yep, so this, the next proposed local law is a repeal and replacement of chapter eighty eight. Um, this one deals with unsafe structures. And again, I'll just go through the memo that our co enforcement office provided. Um, it provides regulations for the removal and repair of unsafe buildings. The proposed law incorporates the same purpose while expanding the policy and procedures for resolution of vacant buildings and property neglect issues. Um. The memo does go into some, oops, I went too far on my own screen, sorry. Um, does go into differences between, between laws. Um. I think that before we didn't have any way to keep track of vacant buildings, so the new law. Is going to provide a way for us to do that with sort of a registry for co enforcement to kind of keep track of vacant buildings. Um. Then. Let's see. I, I, I think it also adds details about enforcement, so it'll make it easier for our co enforcement office to follow up with violation notices. Um. And it looks like. We have another new article. Um, provides a policy for remediation of unsafe structures and involves a public hearing with the town board. And I'm sorry with my unfamiliarity to these laws, their co enforcement laws, try to stay away from that. But um, it's kind of like the alarms and there have been issues with vacant structures in the town and unsafe structures in this. And I think our co enforcement office is just trying to tie up those news areas so that they can enforce them better. Or provide a means for enforcement if we didn't have it before.
So vacant structure can't become a vacant structure until it receives the CFO at some point.
I don't.
So I, I guess what I'm thinking there is a. And that's also applied to a vacant structure, the search instruction that then was.
I would assume so, but I'm not sure. I think those questions would be answered if we left that registering.
Okay. Board have any concerns, issues or. Additions to the proposal if not. Again, she let the ministry collect it to. We endorse the. Equal laws written. Okay, um, approval of the minutes from back on the twenty sixth of November. Uh. Any further corrections that be made to the last published? Edition? If not, do I have a motion to approve? Okay, my motion second. All favor.
Aye.
I will abstain. As I did not attend, nor have I.
That's right, you were not here.
And thank you, Tim, for the record. Thank you for backing me up while I was uh. Green.
Yeah, you missed a group.
Yeah.
So it'll be back next year.
Yeah, it all comes back around.
We, we, we held it over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, man.
I want to participate.
Discussion. All righty, all right, I'm gonna give some money away, guys. Um. We got some releases for Piercebrook. And. Uh, I think they've all, all sent out in detail. Uh, for sections two A and section one, section one, I guess was the original section. Was ninety three thousand plus in section one, there's. Uh, well, I guess now after. Release number four, it'll be about nine hundred and fifty four thousand plus. In section two A. Um. Is everybody familiar what's being asked for? It's. We want to take them, I'll take them one at a time, I guess. Okay, how about the kind of motion to consider a release of. On these, let's do section one. Release number five.
Well.
Of seventy thousand. Plus.
I'll, I'll move to accept that.
So you got a motion?
Doing with seventy first. I'll second.
Motion second. All favor.
Aye.
Can we get a motion on the release number three under section two A? Of three hundred and eight thousand plus. Uh.
I make a motion for three ways to eighteen, okay?
I'll second. Okay. Uh, motion second, favor.
Aye, aye.
And since we're really giving money out tonight, let's give another six hundred and twenty one thousand dollars. Piercebrook for section two A, release number four.
Make that motion, that pay for a motion um. To release six hundred and twenty one thousand seventy seven dollars and ninety two cents. With the release number four partial in section two A.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion second for discussion. All favor.
Aye.
So that takes care of Piercebrook. Probably, probably sell it out there. I guess if they moved in the section two, I knew, I knew they didn't want to move in section two until they had, since the section one sold, so.
Driveway's done. But the new road is done.
Road, yeah.
Martin area is all paved now in Martin Creek.
Okay, uh, finishing up the agenda, uh, no other referrals from town board other than this. Two code amendments, uh, no referrals from anybody else. We, we don't have a ZBA. Uh, not conform any request tonight. We will. Next meeting or two, uh, anything on special projects? Uh, I, I keep reminding Murph about the floodplain and. He said he would like to wait until the actual adoption of the. New floodplain limits.
Which is going to be planned.
I think it's a. January or February, because there's also an accompanied text revision. Comes with it, so at that point he could bring in the uh. The new code as well as the new maps.
And go over with us.
And he's, he's just busy right now, so.
I think he's always gonna.
He's always busy, yeah. If I, if I keep bugging him with companies.
Yeah, I'm just thinking through, um. That would be useful for me and us, I think, as I start working through the stuff. That I've been working on, that I've been thinking through at least to try to get into practice at least. So that we're, we don't come back to any of that, that's all.
Yeah.
That's just going to be a waste of them. We're catching most of it. I think scheduled opening, these are plans. My goal is just to automate more of that, so we don't. We can give new departments back to the groups that really guide us on that. And then uh. There's a little bit more.
Okay. Uh, looking in, let's begin looking into the future. Our next meeting will be our reorganizational meeting. Where we'll do the standard operating procedures to uh.
Are, are we, are we supposed to do a report for the town sometime as well?
Is that um, some, fall summer?
Yeah, it's in the October, where? It used to be, it used to be summer.
Yeah.
And then it was, and we, we said summer was awkward because it's in the middle of the year. So then I, we moved it to October, but I think we might have, but then the town board was talking about having group meetings. And they had that one, which. Didn't melt too much, and that was it, so. I mean. We can put back in our rules of procedure. I don't think it's in there now.
Yes. Look it up and see what it says, but yes, we still have it in there.
When to do?
I don't. Maybe look at that word and a little bit flexible. A little bit more.
I know we talked about it, we said.
Many and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, well, if we're existing, I'm just bringing it up. If we don't, then they can come and ask us.
Yeah.
Well, that's certainly something we consider in our rules of procedure.
Yes.
Put it back in if it's not in there. I think we took it as.
Yeah, my question for you. Because I value your knowledge so much. Can I ask what's driving the short time to get those things? As you've been with to get them done.
I, I'm just. Just meeting with Thursday. And between now and Thursday and so.
And not a lot of days.
Not a lot of days.
I'm just, I'm just afraid of not getting them sometimes. I saw it come in today and I literally read it and.
It's, it's hard when it's only a couple of days.
Yeah.
So.
Should something be changed for that?
Well, usually this, you're getting them at the second planning board meeting of the month. You don't have one this month, so yeah, literally, they're, we see the meetings Thursday and then Tuesday.
Right.
Just not ready yet.
There, there also have been some that moved up to the first meeting, which is even harder.
But then. If we had had two meetings this month, the items we took care of tonight would have been on the second.
Oh, you would have pushed.
Yeah.
They would have been pushed.
It's usually push the PRC, so then.
Right.
Just between the AI committee and the ECB, they meet at the beginning of the month.
It didn't, it didn't feel to me like that was a new occurrence, I guess. The word I wouldn't accept that it was one time. It just feels like it's been.
It did happen last month as well, because there was things that I think had gotten pushed to the first meeting instead of the second. And so I got hurried up and it was partial.
Yeah.
And it's.
Now, if there is something with process that was going up, I don't know what it is since it's a priority.
Okay, so.
Oh, thank you.
Sarah, Kim, staff, uh, if you could circulate our current rules of procedure. So we can look at them and amend them as we see fit. So we're ready to discuss them at the January fourteenth.
Yeah.
And also our calendar, has that been? Or being produced? So we have to adopt that. And I will redistribute that contact information sheet list with everybody's contacts. See if there are any updates. Uh, why don't we include in that your town email address? Um. I've been delinquent not using that address, just trying to. Hurt my computer in this. I'm not a Microsoft guy. So, but I certainly personally asked one of my revolutions. You said my free time. Hopefully. Uh, so I'll get, I'll get the old list out and ask for updates on those. Um. Eric, I'll need his information. I, I think you put yours on the list. Is there any additions? Yeah, it's just, it's, it's an emergency call list if we ever have to change a meeting. Uh, did anybody go to the site view for? The cell tower?
I.
It's a lousy day weather wise and. You're gonna go, bro.
I was gonna go if there needed to be a corner or anything, but. I did not go. Actually, that was the day, that was the day after, I don't, so no.
Oh.
Drove to the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
Took another look at it.
Oh, I drove by it, yeah. We just had to be careful getting together as a group offsite.
Right.
Well, I mean, I can remember days we had that advertised that we were going to meet as a group and we had to stand and not talk to each other and just a blur. And it was, to that point. I've been to a couple of those kind of fielders, so. Anyway.
Um, town board plans, chip, and both of the organization meetings that happened before your first meeting with last year.
It happens before.
Yeah, their organization meeting is January thirteenth, so.
Sometimes I think I had to be reported to the board too.
Yeah.
Times out. Chuck times out, you kind of. You do what?
Two times.
Oh, I heard which of us.
Five times up. Sign her, guys.
Whoa.
Bob, we got any time?
Whoa. I guess for raising, I didn't give. Being on site up, we tried to completion. Uh. So I think that's, uh, anything else? Anybody else has for the board?
Oh, training. Has everybody got their training in? All good, 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 good dogs.
Yeah, there are opportunities in December.
There's a floodplain one on Monday.
Yeah. Sure.
I went to the, I went to the ag one last night. It was pretty good.
Oh, the one that's counted, is it counted?
It's state, state.
And the planning federation is in, we're down this year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they changed it.
So that'll, that's the Otisaka, which is nice. And it's, did you get the announcement about it right? Okay. Uh. Usually you, we budget for. Two. Planning board members, right?
Yeah, we kept with the same, I mean, we changed it, so.
I think we also. Yeah, I'm not sure if any ZBA members want, so.
We usually don't.
Okay.
Always give them the options, but.
So make sure we don't make it a forum. All right, well, be looking ahead. I, I may be interested this year. I haven't gone whole months. Tim, you missed out. You haven't gone there yet, have you? The planning federation, I, I know is in Saratoga or usually was in Saratoga Springs.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
I know Scott has gone.
Batavia, I went in Batavia. Okay, that's pretty close.
Also one that was at FLCC.
For one day.
Yeah.
Like, then we got the thing about uh, HWS in January. Send that.
Okay, well, if nobody has anything else, we can wrap this up. My head.
Make a motion to adjourn. Twenty twenty four, seven, ten PM. And we adjourn on January fourteenth.
Next year, see you all next year.
Second.
Second, all favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for your help this year and have a.